All right. Father, we thank you all for this day and for this opportunity to come and do your business. Pray a little bit that you will help us to make smart decisions and things that are good for our citizens of Westport. We thank you for our safety and we appreciate everything that you've done for us. Samantha, you'll leave some pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and convene our meeting. We'll start with a roll call. Mr. Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Dan Froggordon.
Here.
Marty Lindberry.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Dana McKnight.
Here.
Don Rollins.
Here.
Jimmy Condon.
Here.
Our city attorney and our city clerk are both present. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes that need to be made to the agenda as it was mailed? Do we have a motion?
I make it second.
Do we have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do we have any changes to those minutes? Do we have a motion?
I made it.
Don made it. I second it.
All right. Do we have a motion, a second? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is our public forum. Would anyone like to address the council tonight? Would anyone like to address the council tonight? Okay. We'll close the public forum. Move into our business reports. First up, Walter.
Evening.
Planning Commission report.
Evening. So we've had a little bit of a busy month since I last talked to you. We had a public hearing for the rezone of eighty-five Main from agriculture to commercial, which I'll be giving our recommendation for new business. Then we had a regular meeting following that where we had a petition for a variance requesting a reduction of front setback down to twenty feet, a reduction of the frontage to fifty feet, and then based on their estimate, a reduce, a reduction of minimum lot area down to about fifty-two hundred. Based on their, they didn't really ever say exactly what they were asking for, but based off their designs, that's, that was the minimum. And then we set the public hearing for that on July twenty-first at six o'clock. So that'll be coming up here this, not this Thursday, but the following. Then we also then had also two special meetings with Juliette Ritchie on the sixth of July. Or no, first there's on the twenty-third, and I missed that one. That's where we got in categories and classifications for roadways, the different collectors, major arterial, all that kind of fun, and what the cross-section might look like if we're going to have medians with trees in them and other stuff like pretty perspect, uh, technical stuff. Then same thing for the next special meeting we had that I was there for. It was further discussion of the master street plan where all we might be putting, you know, collectors or minor arterials or city street, you know, random city streets. And then further discussing on the future land use categories, which are not the zones at all. They're generalized categories. More discussion on that. And we also then had a little bit of commission training just to give us an overview of best practices and what we should be looking out for in our deliberation and decision-making. And it was, it was really informative. We, we enjoyed it. It helped. And other than that, I guess that's the update. If there's any questions.
Any questions for Walter? Planning Commission's been busy.
A little bit.
So Walter, that one section of town is, is real over the, by the bluff, right? Where they're wanting to.
Correct. The, the same lot for this variance, it's the same lot that the proposed RV campground was going in. So it's the same lot, but this is so, right now they're, they're estimating thirty-one homes. We weren't quite sure on what that number would be under strict adherence to the zoning guidelines currently. So that's, they're asking for the variance, those three variances, frontage, front setback, and lot area, minimum lot area.
So it's going to be twenty feet setback?
Yes, right now it's twenty-five feet. Says your building line has to be twenty-five feet back from the street. They're asking for twenty feet, or five feet off of that. And then frontage, we have seventy feet for front, how wide your lot has to be, and they're asking down to fifty. So, yeah, and, and then we have to discuss out what their unique hardship is on that. You know, that's the one threshold on why you would give variance for something. So there's, there's discussion to be had.
And what's that date again?
Uh, that is the twenty-first, thank you, six o'clock. Yep, yep, yep. It'll be right before our planning commission meeting, which will be at six-thirty, same day. And, yeah. So, yeah, same there, we got our next planning, regular planning commission meeting. They're the twenty-first also at six-thirty following that public hearing. Anything else for me? If I can answer it. Okay. You're welcome.
Next is court report. Tracy is not here tonight. So we have her report in our packet. Are there any questions concerning her report? Our disbursements are down this month quite considerably. Looks like Arkansas State Police wasn't as busy or didn't have as much coming through the court this month. Uh, Westport Department still staying about where they, you know, they're staying constant or they're up over last month, so.
Down five from last year. What's up?
So I will, I will let the council know that I'm getting a little concerned, and this has nothing to do with Tracy. It's just that department. But our schedule versus convicted, when you start looking at our trials or what's going on with, with our city, city ordinances that are coming toward the court. Whether it's arraignment or whether it's trials, we seem to have a lot scheduled and very few convictions. I'm not overly concerned about how many of the county's convictions get convicted in our court. But if our department tried to city ordinance tickets, those I would like to see pushed through the courts. And that's, that's not on the judge, that's not on Tracy. And so we, we are looking to make some possible changes there to try to get some more convictions coming through the court as it, as it pertains to city violations. There'll be more on that to come. Anything else on the court?
Well, I'm just curious, when you say it's not on the judges, is it that word we don't?
It's not getting through the judge.
It's not getting to the judge?
That's my concern is.
How's that happen?
Well, they're just not getting prosecuted. They're getting, getting dropped out before they're made to court.
Who does that?
So do we not have a subpoena?
Is it prosecuting attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
So that is a, that is a contract position. I think we're going to take interviews to see what we can do on that contract. All right. If there's nothing else on the court, we'll move into the library.
Okay. So we saw a thirty-three percent increase in checkout statistics for the month of June. And there were increases also in the number of requests for materials and in-person visits. This is due to the summer reading program and our, our summer events. But our number of questions that we receive and new library cards issued was down last month. So keeping in mind that many people without kids are on vacation. Our summer reading kickoff was a success. We currently have ninety-one kids signed up, kids and teens, maybe an adult here or there that wanted to participate. Compared with last year, we had thirty-seven. So that's a one hundred and sixteen percent increase in participants this year. Today we had trike theater put on a play, and tomorrow is circuit card creations for teens. On Thursday, we have a felt-in class with Nancy Starr. And you can pick up a full calendar of events at the library or you can check out our webpage. Any questions? All right, thank y'all. Oh, sorry.
I have to ask, is this, are these numbers accurate?
Yes.
So does everybody notice that in June, thirty-three percent of everybody that came into the library came in in June? You had a busy June?
We did. That was the start of our summer reading program, so we had our kickoff. We began it then. So that's why the numbers for last month are up, and they're going to be up again for the month of July.
So we had almost five thousand in-person visits in June. And year-to-date, we've had fifteen thousand. That's made busy police down there.
Yeah, I think everyone too is, is, you know, trying to get out of their house. I think if you look at the statistics from last year, like before I came on, like they're, they're pretty low. But it's due to COVID, so I think more people are just, are getting out and doing things.
No, it's fantastic, Lance.
All right, thank you.
Chief Nelson.
Our tickets are down by five this year. But I would say that's because we haven't rode as many parking tickets. It hasn't been as bad until this fourth of July, and it was horrible. And we got hit hard. Ended up having to tow some. We were down though, we were down about a hundred calls from last year at three thirty-seven. We had a hundred and forty-nine citations and seventy-six warrants. We held an active shooter class of live fire at West Fork this time. Last year we did it Greenland, this time we did it West Fork. And it was Elkins, Greenland, West Fork, and I'm going to include Farmington because we had one Farmington officer there. So it went really well. They do live, what they do is they use simulation, do live scenarios. If there was an active shooter, how they, how they're supposed to respond. And I think it's one of the best classes they can do right now for that. Sad news, we're going to lose Secretary Elena Brandon, who's going to go to the VA. I can't blame her. She's getting a big raise and she's getting federal benefits. And she's going to go sometime in mid-August. The good news is we've had about forty applicants apply, which I can't believe. We've also lost Brad Wiley. For any of you guys that don't know, he is now the undersheriff at Crawford County. He was elected into that position. And right now we have two applicants. It's not looking, and it's not looking promising, but we'll find somebody.
Can we get some of the clerk, the receptionist applicants to?
Well, if they can go to the academy, if they're willing to. But anybody got questions for me?
Thank you, sir. Isaac.
Well, it's been a month or two since y'all seen me. Well, I mean, it's hot and dry, so we're not chasing water getting in the sewer right now. We're chasing water leaving water lines. It is nice to, it's a lot easier to find leaks when it's hot and dry. But when we were getting rain with the help of some of Nick's flow monitoring that McClellan had done, we did chase down quite a bit of sewer inflow, so. Through the month of June, late April, June, we fixed nine cleanouts, eight manhole leaks, killed seven ta, or replaced seven taps that were leaking, and killed one tap that didn't even be there, and three-point repairs, so. And all of that was on like two blocks. So most of that was on Craig Street and this little short piece of Phillips right here. And well, and the little, the hole right here at the four-way stop was a point repair we'd done. We have put in place a new work order system. Amanda, my secretary, found that. It's an app, so we're able to track where we've been and where we need to go a little better. It, it seems to be working out great. It's free, so it, it helps us get, helps me get my guys where they need to be. And then Amanda sends me stuff all the time, so. Because if I get busy, then I forget a lot of stuff, so. Of course, the mayor and I and Tom was there as well. We sent through a meeting with Fayetteville on the water rates. That's still ongoing. Working with Nick on getting the ponds closed out. We got another meeting there in the morning. And I, I don't know, Nick may have something to touch on too. Y'all got any questions for me?
Now, we're looking on the sewer ponds.
They're getting there. They're dry. We just got to get it hauled off. I think their contract date is up. The fif, is it the fifteenth?
Seventeen. Yeah, we gave them, we gave them some rain days. Luckily, we had a rain day sitting right down the road for most of the period they've been out there, so we could. I sent them the chart and showed them what days I'd give them. Nice having the flow monitoring and stuff going on because we have really good data. But we gave them nine days to have everything out, so they're close.
So a couple of things to note. Christie, Jeff had asked Christie for a little bit better reporting on our sewer income versus our sewer outgoing revenues. And so I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at that yet, but that, that helps break it down and we can see what kind of revenue we're taking in, what we're paying to Fayetteville for the treatment, and then what those bonds are that we're paying each month for that. And while the rest of our budget looks really, really good, we're a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars behind. Or we're in the red, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars on, on that sewer. So that's why it's, you know, we've, we've been harping on this for some time now. Isaac and his guys are doing everything they can. We're hoping these repairs will, we'll see, we'll see some, some good progress out of that. Isaac did say, what was it we talked yesterday or day before? With it being so dry, we only sent ninety-five thousand gallons one day. That's about where we should be on a day.
We sent eighty-eight five to Fayetteville yesterday.
So we, we sell two hundred?
Right now we're buying around two forty.
So we're buying two hundred and forty thousand gallons. We have twice as many water customers as we do sewer customers. So we, we think that's, you know, that's pretty good. And it's so dry now that there shouldn't be any INI getting in the system. So that's the good news, but it's hot and dry. But the bad news is we're halfway through the year and we're a hundred and sixty thousand in the red. So what that's telling us is our sewer rates are not covering our treatment cost plus our bond payments. When we went to Fayetteville's meeting on the last month, I made the comment that if they raise those rates thirty-seven percent, City of Westport's likely to default on somebody. So we need to, we need to keep the pressure on, on Fayetteville. I will say that the Fayetteville Council, me, Christie, and Isaac were there. The Fayetteville Council was very receptive to, to hear us, to hear our thoughts on it, to hear our terms with that. I would ask that everyone sends them an email on the nineteenth. We'll be meeting up there for another public hearing where they're expected to take some action on that. When, when I got to the meeting, I decided to reverse course, and I, I asked them for a rate decrease. They're, they're proposing a thirty-eight percent increase. I asked them for a decrease and pointed out that we're not getting wholesale rates at, in the City of Westport. So we buy our water from the City of Fayetteville, and they discount it thirty-two percent off of what they sell it to Fayetteville customers. Okay, so they're, they're home Fayetteville citizens. We get a thirty-two percent discount on, on water. I'm asking for that same rate decrease on sewers. I don't know that we're going to get that, but I, I think that that's, we go that route. They need to treat us like a wholesale customer. So that's, that's one talking point that I would highlight for you guys. We're not getting wholesale pricing. We only represent three percent of their total volume. So we are really in a small, they don't even notice our flows, okay? So we represent three percent of their total volume going into their treatment plant. Our contract is less than two years old with the City of Fayetteville.
Did we ever give any water loss or anything?
We did. Their report that they, that they paid to have compiled for them on this rate increase, that report shows that they are running in excess of forty percent INI. I asked specifically Tim Nyander, the Public Works Director of the City of Fayetteville, for their INI reports and their water loss reports. He replied back with an INI report that showed a twenty percent, twenty-six percent INI at the City of Fayetteville. So that's a good, good deal of difference between what the, the consulting firm is showing, what the City of Fayetteville is showing. At that time, he told me he was still working on the water loss reports, and I still have not received those.
I still feel like they're trying to use us to make their problems.
I agree a hundred percent on that, and I think that's a talking point. Then we, we make a very small percentage of it, less than three percent.
And we know exactly what we're sending them.
That's right. But they, their study was solely based on how do they increase revenue to cover a projected budget shortfall? There were no cost-saving measures studied in that. They, they didn't look at anything that they could do on their end to reduce the need for that revenue. They're solely looking for X amount of revenue. So I think that's another talking point. And then finally, Nick went through that report, that consulting report, and he pointed out that we are currently at the revenue that Fayetteville is requesting from us. So they're.
Combined, combined, us and Elkins combined.
Yeah, so they're, they're looking for nine hundred thousand a year between us and Elkins in revenue. We're currently exceeding that by a little bit, so I think they're wanting nine hundred and thirty or something.
Yeah, nine thirty.
The two of us are already paying nine hundred and forty or something thousand a year. So we're already at the revenue levels that they're seeking to get from us, and that they're using this rate increase to try to get to those levels where we're already there, so.
Us and Elkins are the only two.
Wholesale. We're the only two wholesale clients that they have, yes. And so the way it kind of works is the City of Fayetteville, they handle all of Greenland's water and sewer. Greenland doesn't have a water and sewer department. Farmington doesn't have a water and sewer department, but Farmington did do some bond, they took out some bonds to build a lift station, to build some infrastructure, some plant, to help Fayetteville take on Farmington's water and sewer. But that's a point I made to the council was we have our own water and sewer department, we're doing our own maintenance. That is not a cost that goes through to Fayetteville. We're already sending out a bill to, to the citizens of Westport, and we're having to increase that bill. Our bill is already double what the City of Fayetteville's is. It's already double what the City of Farmington's is. You know, our minimum bill is double what their current sewer customers are seeing. So those are all good talking points, I think, to put in that, that email. But I would encourage you to thank them for, for hearing this out. I believe every council member that was present took the time to ask questions and comment on the situation that Westport was facing. So I felt really good when we left there that, that they heard our concerns, that they, they saw that maybe the City of Westport had been overlooked, the situation had been overlooked. Maybe we were getting, you know, some treatment that wasn't really equitable to us. Since then, the City Council has said that maybe the Public Works Director should get with all the cities that are connected to this and, and have a discussion with them. And so we did, me, Isaac, and Tom met with Tim Nyander, the consulting firm. The City of Farmington was there, Elkins was there, Greenland was there. So we had a, we had a good discussion on, on some of the issues taking place. But ultimately, it's going to come down to the council and their decision on how to move forward. So an email from us will go a long ways. I'll be at the meeting, Farmington will be at this meeting. I think Elkins will have a representative at this meeting, if you're in town.
I believe so.
And so we are looking at it from several different aspects. One, just the aspect of it's an undue burden to place on the City of Westport. Two, it's, we're two years into a contract, and this is essentially changing the contract. The current contract says that they can have a return on investment of two percent. This, this new rate increase is trying to get a return on investment up to seven percent. That's some of Tom's work that he'll be fighting on the contract side if it goes to that. But hopefully, hopefully if we reach out to them, they will, they will see our concerns. They will see what it's, what it's doing to Westport. If nothing else, hopefully we can keep the rates where they are. But I really would like wholesale pricing. I don't know that we'll get that, but we're going to push for it. Five thirty.
On the nineteenth.
And so any citizen, I would think, would be able to attend that. Certainly, council members will fit in that, so.
Yeah, you think they add on the, on the pond?
Yeah. I think Christie sent out an email with everyone's contact information at the Fayetteville City Council, so.
I'll share it on the place with you.
Good, good.
Well, by the way, water loss is down.
Yeah. Yeah, if you see a wet spot in your yard or.
Right now?
Have one green patch out in your yard, call us and let us come take a look at it, because, because it is pretty hot and dry. But, and I will let y'all know that Denali is working on a change order to, and we're going to meet tomorrow and talk through that, but having their dirt contractor that's there now to close in the ponds after he gets all the sledge out, so. So hopefully in the next week or so, we should have a change order coming through to hopefully keep that on, on schedule, so. Hold on, do you have anything else, Nick?
I think you covered everything. Trying to finish up the, the original work with boils, with manhole stuff. So I think we're, we're close on that with Isaac and Cory from Fayetteville. Was it a couple of weeks ago now?
Yeah.
So we're, we're about to give them something back on, on what they proposed and propose something different to, to finish it up, get us, get us all happy. We're looking on that funding application too that we're going to turn in Friday for asking for some, some help with either principal forgiveness and money for rehab. Basically, kind of what the mayor's been saying about, you know, more money going out than coming in, trying to, trying to help, help y'all out with some of that awful money. But supposedly coming, coming out from the state level, so it hasn't been committed to, to water and sewer yet, but we keep hearing that it's, it's coming, so they're telling us to, to put in applications and state our case.
Any other questions on that? Thank you, sir.
You betcha.
So that, that is definitely a headache. The states, the states have been given money, the states have been funded with that, with that federal, those federal funds. And it's not just Arkansas. It's from what I can gather, most states are still setting on that. They just haven't started opening up spigots and letting that money flow yet. And that, that creates problems at our level, but it creates a whole host of other problems as well as for the macroeconomics of how it really works. But hopefully, they're going to open that up and we'll get, get some funds flowing through to us. All right. Ken, your smart report? All right, Chad, there's more for.
So like Isaac, I hadn't been here in a while. Had a lot going on, but I won't go over everything. Couple of things, big things that that I do want to talk about is one is we did finish up our baseball and softball season. And once again, it was a very wet season, lots of rain. But in spite of that, we had a good year. We got it, was able to get in almost all of our, all of our games. There was a few that we weren't able to in our tournaments. And overall, it was a good year. I can say that I had literally zero major issues with, out of any of my coaches, teams, or parents. Can't say the same for some of the towns that visited us. But all of my coaches and teams and parents and players were really phenomenal this year. I can't, I I just can't thank them enough for that. Makes my job a lot easier. Got good feedback from our facilities and fields as well. And again, our umpires and our coaches and teams, we really got a lot of good feedback on overall, on on the whole program for for West Fork. I cannot say the same about a lot of the other towns involved, 'cause I I feel those complaints as well. And so even when our teams traveled, I can think of one, I got one complaint out of one of our teams that that traveled, and it was, turned out to really not be what they said it was. So overall, a good year. So things we can always improve on, and we've already started, so. And then the next thing is the Fourth of July event. I thought it was a great event as well. Everyone there seemed to really enjoy it. The fireworks show was phenomenal once again. But I cannot do that without lots and lots of help. This year, I kind of put, sit down and put a pin to it. And I have an exact number, but we had well over a hundred volunteers this year to help with that event, either in prepping or working during the event or cleaning up after, handing out ice cream. There's so much. Several of y'all were there, Parks Committee members, Fire Department, Police Department, city workers, friends, family. We had local churches involved, just, just random citizens that that wanted to help, that stepped up. So I just, I'm not gonna list anyone by name, but there were several organizations and lots of people that, and and same with our sponsors. We, we got a record number of sponsors. We got the most donations and and sponsorship this year as well. Of course, we spent the most this year, as everything else with inflation and all. It it costs quite a bit more than we, the events of the past, but we've also were able to get the most amount of donations to help offset that as well. But again, I just, I just really appreciate everyone that that stepped up and helped us and was able to put on a great event. It couldn't be done without them. I mean, when you're talking about a hundred people, at least a hundred people coming out. Was informed that we, we need a few more to help hand out food. So we'll organize that a little bit better next year and and do some changes there to make it even better. We did give out roughly twenty-three hundred hamburgers and hot dogs, which is a little bit less than we, of course, this is the first year we've done that in a couple of years because of COVID. But in years past, that's a little bit down. But I think the heat had a lot to do with that. People came a little later, and also there was, it was hot, and they didn't want to eat till late. And we actually served about almost an hour longer than we normally do. But we did give up a little, a little bit less. I was able to return a lot of the things that we had purchased or or we'll be able to utilize them in another event down the road. So wouldn't be anything go to waste as far as leftovers from from that as well. So I think that's about it. Again, I want to thank everyone, so. Y'all have anything for me?
It's not a grass softball field, it's what?
Turf.
Have we thought about doing turf?
Yes, we have checked into turf.
I know, I would love that because of the rainouts.
It does help. I'm, there's good and bad to it. For one, it's very expensive, and there's, there are costs down the road on it as well. But I'm a grass and dirt guy. I think it should be played in grass and dirt. For maintenance, it's great, but when you get to these extreme heats, it's also not a good situation for turf. It could be something that we do down the road, but it, it's not, I know Greenland did it on a couple of other fields, but. It, it, it is, I'll agree with maintenance. I don't like the way it plays. I don't care for it myself, but it might be something that we do. As of now, I don't think it's necessary, but maybe something down the road. But it is very expensive, I will say that.
Is it compared to how much we put into our fields?
Upfront costs, yeah. I mean, it's, it's pretty expensive. And and there's not, a lot of people think you put it down and you're done, but it's, that's not the case. There's several sections you have to replace almost yearly, and then eventually, you would have to replace the whole thing as well. I mean, they're doing it for a reason. They don't have rainouts, that's, that's for sure. And a lot of the places are doing, doing it, they hold tournaments every weekend, things like that as well. So it helps pay for some of that. But but it's something we'll always, we can always research and check into, for sure.
I just love them. As a flyer. It's because the rainouts, you know.
It doesn't, I mean, that part would make my life a whole lot easier, for sure. Our fields are doing better. The amount of rain we got this year, I mean, we, we either just got washed out or we were able to play, which was kind of nice. We didn't. But really, just depends on the weather. But that's something we'll keep looking at moving forward.
Do you have any idea how many people we had there for the fourth?
No, I wish I had a good way to count that. I mean, I usually can just, it's just hard to say. I mean, like I said, we, we fed twenty-three hundred, or gave away twenty-three. Now, several of those got probably more than one hamburger or more than one hot dog, but several of them didn't eat. So it's, it's really, there's just no good way to track it. I really don't know. There was a lot. I think there was as many people as the events we've had in the past when we've had the full events. I just don't think they ate as much. The the inflatables were hit. Man, those were, there was lines for those all night. And more rolled in right before the fireworks. A lot of them came, it was so hot, a lot of them come late just for the fireworks. But it's just, I I really don't know, Don. We always kind of, this really isn't based on a whole lot, but we usually estimate there's somewhere around twenty-five hundred people there. But I don't have a lot of good numbers. It's just kind of based on what we feel like.
It looked maybe like three or four thousand.
It may be, I really don't know. You can go around and try and count them for me next year. I wish I had a good answer for you. There's a lot. There was a lot.
With flip flops, you can count to twenty.
I know, we actually probably parked more cars 'cause our, our overflow parking that we've used in the golf course, I think there was a lot more over there this year than than there have been in the past. So I think we had more vehicles. There's less places, you know, they can't park at Superfoods anymore and things like that. So that could have something to do with it as well. But I know we probably parked more cars, but as far as people, I don't know.
So Tony Kiklai brought up a good point. We hold our Fourth of July celebration pretty much the same night that every other small town had theirs.
Yes.
I think Farmington, Prairie Grove, Lincoln, Elkins all had theirs the same night. I think Prairie Grove, I know.
Elkins did.
Elkins, and I think Prairie Grove did. But it's, it's Chad's leadership, I think, is is a big proportion of why we have so many people here. I know for a fact, we had some people from Lincoln that came all the way to to West Fork hours.
And some from Elkins, too, because they're back to me.
And lots from Fayetteville.
Yeah, so I think a lot of that's on you, Chad. You do a great job putting that together, getting the volunteers we need. This year, I think, was better than any year, getting people in and out.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I know a lot of that's fire departments, Boy Scouts, it's all those people that are involved. But it's, it's a well-planned, well-executed event.
And we start in January, planning it, and then really prepping and planning for months. And then even as soon as ball season is over, that's about all me and TJ worked on, you know, was prepping and getting stuff ready. And then there's a lot of work that night and that day as well. And that's where the volunteers really come in. Isaac's guys helped us, and even the Fire Department guys helped us days leading up to that, doing things. So there's a lot goes into it.
Well, I, I did go to Farmington's and West Fork's, and yours was awesome.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it was, baseball and softball was a great year as well. And I, I attribute that. I've got a lot of good coaches, I got good umpires, things that help as well. Makes a difference.
People are the same everywhere, though. They are. People aren't different, though. People, it's the way it's run.
It does help. All right, anything else? Thank y'all.
Chief Motterson.
So our calls were actually down a little bit, sixty-three versus a hundred in May, so, but it didn't seem like it. We got our results from our blood drive, that we registered sixty-four people to GLEA give, but only fifty-four were able to give, which actually exceeded, it was nine above their goal, which was awesome. Their big point to us was that we had fifteen first-time donors. They said that is huge to get that in some of them. So that's credit to that. Rob Repke did a great job, put it together, getting the donations we had for door prizes. So so a big, huge thank you to him, getting that. Just looking forward to next year, so. It was really, 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 really close.
You know this too broadly.
They promised they'll do better next year. All right, we'll see.
He did try tacos this year.
We'll, uh, we'll try to, we'll try to help them a little more next year, maybe, I don't know. But. He did even offer that, if they would give and donate, Police Department, they wouldn't get a ticket for a year. I couldn't believe he did that, but. He did. We are gonna try to put something together, maybe closer to the time school starts, to do some kind of a community CPR class, stop the bleed kind of deal, just kind of educate the community. Really, the only thing I've got is that kind of an FY, or what is dry and and hot as it is, that probably gonna try to put on a burn ban in the city limits of West Fork and in Greenland. The county is gonna take forever to get it done, so we. Prairie Grove did. Lincoln may have as well. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's been a long time since it's been this hot and dry, so it just seems like be the smartest thing to do. And the reason I bring it up is because, for some reason, those two words, burn ban, creates a big political stir. You guys may get phone calls, I can't believe no limit burn. Well, we control the burning permits anyway, so we're not giving out burning permits. It's really no different, other than the fact of it'll make Chief Nelson's guys patrolling around. They don't have to wonder, hey, I maybe wonder if I got a permit or not, or they'll just know there's no burning right now. So it'll make it easier on them. Is it gonna cut our volume down? No, not at all. But it's a start, you know, it's a help. So just kind of letting you guys know that we're, we're probably gonna do that tomorrow and and do it in West Fork and Greenland. So hopefully, the county will follow soon, do it pretty soon, too, 'cause there's no rain inside. Other than that, I think that's all I've got. What's that? What are you talking about?
You said you were gonna lock my brush box.
Do it tonight, yeah, do it tonight.
All right, thanks, chief. Christie.
So our bank balances have increased by a hundred and seventy-five thousand this year, and all of our city departments are now under budget. And our sales tax looks like it's pretty much staying steady at six to seven percent increase for the city sales tax. The water, Heath already touched on a little bit of that new section down there that I put down there, so you can see where the sewer money is, the income that we're bringing in versus what we're paying out for that and and where that's putting us in our budget. We are only, only showing a seventy-six thousand dollar decrease in our bank balance this year, but that's because the city's contributing sales tax money, and we've had to do some of the ARPA funds and all that to help, help that department. So that's why the bank balance decrease is not as large as what the deficiency is in our funds for the sewer. On the financials, I have gone through and underlined all the line items that are more than fifty percent since we're halfway through the year. There seems to be a lot of them underlined, but I will tell you, the majority of those are ones that we pay heavy at the front of the year, at the first of the year. So I do expect those to still offset themselves, and everybody's budget overall looks good and and will cover the line items that aren't going to correct themselves at this point, so.
Sounds weird, but that bill expenses that.
Yeah, strange, huh? Any questions? I did get an email from Department of Finance. We should be seeing the next round of ARPA funds around the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth of this month. And Heath has asked, the department has to turn in their request on that. So hopefully, we'll see in August or September if we'll have some resolutions ready to to allocate some of those funds. We will also have, just heads up, we'll have a, a resolution next month. The state is doing a five thousand dollar stipend for all full-time police officers. So we have to pass a resolution to be able to pay that money out. The, the department's already done what they need to do to to get that money. It's a long process. It's been sent through their licensing, I don't know what it's called, CLUS.
CLUS.
CLUS program then has to go on to multiple other departments to be approved before they actually send us the money. So I'm not sure when we'll get the money, but we'll go ahead and do the resolution to amend the budget next month, and then that way, when we do get it, we can go ahead and pay it out, so.
So with that, Christie mentioned the ARPA funds, Isaac mentioned a change order. We haven't tied those together yet. But the change order to get that sewer plant to grade and seeded is gonna be about a hundred and sixty-ish thousand.
I think one, one eighty-eight was proposed.
So just keep that in mind, that that's still coming. Thankfully, we've got ARPA funds coming about the same time. But that is still something we gotta deal with. Anything else for Christie?
What about audits?
They are. Jim actually sent me Monday a whole list of stuff to get to him. So I've already gotten that back to him, so he is in the process of getting all that together.
Thank you. We don't have any old business. We have some new business. Ordinance five zero seven, three zone eighty-five main, from agricultural to commercial. Walter?
Yeah, we had our public hearing. After a lot of debate and discussion out of what it could be or what it couldn't be, we finally got down to the question of, is the city better served having that lot as commercial rather than agricultural? And we voted and approved to recommend approval of that zoning change. There.
Any questions for Walter concerning that?
The old block building, the pump house for when the, right there at the bridge, when it used to be a.
Any questions on that?
And specifically just that, the city split it down to just enough area for the building and a few parking spaces. So it's a smaller lot than it was previous.
I'll make the motion.
Be a motion to suspend the rule later, if they want to make it.
That's what I'm here for. So I have a motion to suspend a rule. Read in a second. In a second, read this potato only, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorton?
Yes.
Marty Lindelberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Gina McKnight?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Jimmy Condon? All right, motion to suspend the rules is passed.
Mayor, it's an ordinance, rezoning, structural aid, commercial, seed.
Mayor, it's an ordinance rezoning, it's for lands for agricultural aid, commercial, seed, and seed in West Fork, and so on. You might, uh, entertain a motion, do you pass?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second.
So a motion is taken to pass that. Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindelberry?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Gina McKnight?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Jimmy Condon?
Yes.
And that motion carries. That has been rezoned. Other business. Uh, we have an update, uh, just on our code enforcement. We've, we've put Aaron Foster, uh, doing code enforcement. I don't remember what month he started. He's been in about two months. This, this week, that was about two months worth of code enforcement. He, uh, Aaron works for Isaac part-time, um, and, uh, does part-time code enforcement. So typically, uh, on Fridays, he can go out, uh, look for issues. Uh, the following Friday, he can go back, uh, and check back up on those issues, see how, uh, that's progressing. Totally happy with, with his progress there. He has done a fine job. As you can see, he's got twenty-four contacts, fourteen of those have been resolved, three have been turned over to, uh, the police department. As you might have guessed, he's ran into a little bit of pushback on that. Some people who have really pushed for code enforcement have pushed back on that, but, uh, I think all in all, our code enforcement is going along really well now that, uh, Aaron is, is working that. Any questions concerning that?
Except that we're, uh, getting prosecuted.
So yes, we, we still, um, this is one of the areas where that comes into play, so if, uh, and we do have some properties that, uh, where we're not getting, uh, issues resolved, that's having to go through, uh, the prosecutor, so. Next step is, um, if they're not working to improve it, uh, the police department writes a letter. At that point, we can write citations, um, and as you'll see, we've got, uh, under Mayor's comments, we've got some questions on, on how we wanna proceed on some of those. But that will be resolved. But, but all in all, yes, so we've had really good luck with just him bringing it to people's attention, that, hey, you're, you're in violation of this or that, um, and, uh, he's really even keeled, he's, he has a calm demeanor, uh, and he's letting people know that we're willing to work with him. Another item of other business. Discussion on, uh, adding Juneteenth as a paid holiday for twenty-twenty-three.
It's a federal holiday.
So it's, I mean, can we discuss and vote on that tonight?
I don't think that we need to vote on it tonight, it's not under new business, but I think...
Well, that's what...
Have a discussion on it, yeah, and, and we'll move it forward, uh, one way or the other.
I'm all for it.
No objections? So the only, uh, and I'm not saying this is a big deal at all, uh, we typically follow Washington County, uh, with our, uh, paid holiday schedule. Washington County is not looking to do this in twenty-twenty-three. That doesn't mean we can't do it, I'm, I'm just simply pointing out that's, um, that's where we typically follow. So council, any questions on it? Uh, no concerns with, with moving forward, with putting that on it?
The state, how can the county not do it to the state?
It's a crazy question.
I don't, I don't know what county goes by or how they set their holidays. I did talk to their HR person, and she just said that the current judge, which is changing in January, is not changing that before he leaves, so they're not really sure what will happen as of January, but...
So state uses twenty-one?
I know Fayetteville started this year. I don't know about any of the other small towns around here.
So Christie will get that on the agenda, uh, as official business in, uh, the coming months, so that we can, we can move forward and take action on that?
Certainly.
No, it's, it's not. So, um...
I mean, nobody's complaining. It's just, it's another holiday that...
It's another holiday that, that really will not affect, uh, any of our departments, other than the police department.
And fire. Or you gonna let them?
Fire works on them.
So the reason, the reason I left, I left the fire out is, uh, they have less full-time employees. Uh, it's, it's a smaller hit to the fire budget, but the police budget, we will need to, to make an adjustment for that, uh, so, yeah.
I said, let's get it on there, maybe the county will follow suit.
There you go. Big leaders.
And I want it, too.
So Christie will get that on our, on our agenda for a coming meeting, and we'll get that approved and in place for next year? So is there any other, other business? We, we put other business on there, so if you guys had something you wanted to discuss in a meeting, we could, uh, bring that forth and, and have a discussion on it. So let's, let's go ahead and talk about, uh, code violations and how to proceed. And where we're at with that, um, and this is, this, a lot of this is questions for Attorney Kicklack, is once we have, uh, once we've reached out, uh, in particular to a business, what are some of our options as far as not issuing business licenses? What, what can we do to ensure that something is either cleaned up or it takes, um, a step to the next, to the next level?
So there's a criminal side and there's a civil side. The business license, I'm not sure if it crosses into both or not, but certainly code enforcement does. With code enforcement, you have the, uh, the criminal side where a prosecutor would take a citation written by the, uh, police department or the code enforcement officer, if, uh, we had it set up that way, and prosecute that person to get, you know, to find them for not getting cleaned up, and then maybe have a fine per day until it's cleaned up. On the civil side, I would file a lawsuit based on, you know, violation of, um, our code, after telling them, you know, this is what we expect, this is what the code is, you have to continue to, uh, say your piece, and then if you couldn't figure that out, we would ask a, a judge, it may be this judge in civil court, but most likely a circuit judge, to issue an injunction to make it stop. And if they didn't stop it then, we would ask the judge to, uh, use their contempt powers to either punish the person or order it cleaned up at their expense. On the business license side, we would wanna make sure our business license ordinance, our code about business licenses permitted us to use a violation of this other code as a reason to revoke. And of course, we'd give that person due process till then we're about to, uh, or considering it, let them again say their piece be heard, and then make a decision about whether we would revoke that. When, when you revoke a business license, someone who's already flaunting environmental code, they might just go ahead and flaunt business license as well, so. Sometimes it physically make the difference that you're looking for, which is just to get the property cleaned up. You're not trying to put someone in or out of business, you just want them to follow the same rules everybody else does. Um, because otherwise, it's not just bad for your town, it's bad for your neighbors, uh, it's, it's bad for everything. And so those are the two routes, and we can even take those routes simultaneously, you know, if, if we have a, an emergency that requires that.
So the business license ordinance is something that I'm wanting to look at, uh, that I began looking at. Uh, I've talked to Chief Myers about this, um, so I would, I would like to get, um, to a point where we have our fire department, um, doing annual checks on the businesses. And I think part of that maybe needs to be, um, communicated through the business license, uh, that that's part of doing a business in the city of West Fork, is that, uh, you will have a fire department inspection. And that's not uncommon. The city of Fayetteville does it, I'm not sure how many small towns do it, but it's something that I would definitely like to, to begin, uh, getting in and doing a fire inspection, uh, on those.
So are we talking about like a safety type of safety code, a fire code inspection?
Yes, sure.
To, to, if you're gonna have guests in your building, so. Now someone's talking about violation of environmental code, like you gotta get that trash or the grass covered or anything like that. We're talking about the kind of things that you would check for, for fire safety.
Okay.
And the nice thing about those is they're pretty objective. The wiring either is or isn't, the sprinkler either is or isn't, the doors, the windows, the exit sign, the R. Whereas tall brass and, you know, does that car run or not, that's a harder call, and it's harder for you just...
Yeah, I'm certainly not asking the fire department to do that. Just basically, an inspection on the, the extinguishers, uh, do that stuff piled up, plantable stuff piled up, that type of thing.
Zoning, you know, it won't be hard to figure out what's on their end. That is something you can just, it's either, it's objective, they're either, you know, conducting that business in the proper zone or not. That's gonna get more important in the next couple of years, that we make sure that people who get a business license or maintain one are doing their business for what they're supposed to. A lot of folks aren't, you know, and so...
How long are we given on, on the first go-out? How long it comes, is he saying they have to clean it up?
So I think we're asking for, uh, a week, uh, but we're giving them thirty days.
Do we tell them that?
Yeah, we're giving them a copy of the, uh, Magnificent Real Property Code.
We're trying to work with them, if they'll just make an effort, that's the thing. Some of them don't make any effort whatsoever, but most of them do.
Yeah, yeah, most people have been very, very, uh, very responsive to it. What we're running into is we, we have a couple businesses that either are operating without a business license or are in the process of applying for a new business license, um, while we're looking at some code violations. And so my, that would, part of my question was, um, do we, can we hold the business license, uh, until the maintenance of, of property is taken care of?
You know, you wanna have that written down, but if you didn't, and you wanted to go ahead and do it, we just do it very, very clearly, and say, this is what we're doing. Why would we give you a business license to start a business when you're not even complying?
Or, or renew your business license.
So why would we do that? So let's get that done, and just make it clear that's what we're doing. If we're not gonna, if we don't want you to continue anyway, even where you're going, we're not talking about your business, what anyone, just about being cleaned up, so. Why would we on one, uh, when a city on the very west eastern edge of the state, um, West Memphis, uh, was giving business licenses regardless of zoning, you know, they didn't check, so the zoning office was here, as the business office was here. You'd go here, get your business license, but never go here to make sure you're in the right place. And the town was covered with people doing business in the wrong place. But the court said, geez, you know, you keep telling them, go ahead and do it, go ahead and do it, now you wanna all of a sudden stop them all, so that was a good problem, so. I think it's better to, to, to hold up on something like that and say, we're not trying to hold you up, we gotta get you cleaned up. So why would we go forward on the one more, but can't even get the other one out?
Any other thoughts on that?
But can you actually stop them from doing business?
If they're, if they're doing business without a license at all, yes, we can stop them. We would just, not a whole lot of due process required, it's not taking anything away.
So what would they, what would that process be? A violation from the police department?
It could be both, it could be, again, criminal and civil. You don't want, you have to decide which way we wanna go or both.
Okay.
What if it's just expired? They had a license, but it was expired, does that make it the same?
It, that's, so that's it, that's, you start off typically with something, did you miss it? You know, well, it's easy to diss later, you can just stop your business unless you're gonna come on in here and get it done. And if they're not, then we would have to enforce it, if someone was responsible.
So this particular address, is it, is there do, is their business license, like, is it already up? Or is it exending?
So their current business license has expired. The business license they have does not match what the, the business activity is. And when that was pointed out, they decided that they would like a business license that matches their activity. We have so far not issued that license, uh, because of the ongoing code violations. Any other questions? Alright, so, um, one other comment. I had a very pleasant meeting on Sunday in City Admin with, uh, one of our local, um, outside of the city residents, uh, someone who pays attention to what's going on. And one thing they were wanting to discuss is, what is the city doing, um, in our new planning document? Are, are there any, um, any guidelines, any movement toward more sustainable, um, building development, that type of thing? And so some of the questions in particular were, uh, does the new code have anything that, uh, that either requires or recommends encourages, uh, water reducing, um, showerheads or toilets? Do we have anything in the code that encourages or requires, um, more, um, like light bulbs that, that don't draw as much energy? Are we doing anything for new street lights that we're putting in, you know? Do we have codes in place for that, or are we even thinking about it? Are we, are we thinking about requiring or encouraging, um, a new subdivision to possibly put in, uh, some solar panels? Is there anything out there to, to help with that, to encourage that? And, uh, so our, our new code does have some language concerning some of that, certainly not all of that. But, but it is something that, that we need to be thinking of, Walter, uh, as we move forward.
And the building standards, yeah.
Yeah, and our building standards, and that's what I told you, you know, we certainly have some, some new building standards going into place, uh, but it, it doesn't go that far. Uh, I, I certainly think that at a minimum, uh, I'm not big on, uh, demanding some of that stuff, but, uh, an encouragement of it, I think, is, is definitely somewhere that we should be, uh, we should encourage it. I don't know, uh, I don't know of incentives we can use at this point, uh, to, to help encourage it, but I certainly think we, at a minimum, we could get some verbiage in that code that, that is encouraging, uh, a more sustainable thought process as we continue to develop. You know, it was pointed out, we, we're in our valley, right? Uh, we're the headwaters of the drinking water, and so, uh, we need to be looking at, at what we're going to protect that, and just, uh, sustain what we have. So that was a good meeting, I brought, brought a couple things to light. Uh, I was in another meeting last week, uh, and I don't know if this is gonna come to West Fork. Uh, I don't know that we'll have an opportunity to participate in this, but I'm throwing it out there because it's pretty wild. And if it does come, I want you to have had a heads up. Part of the Walton Foundation is, is looking at how they're spending the money. And so in the past, they've gave, uh, large, uh, blocks of, of money to cities to do this, to do that. Apparently, the Walton Foundation is looking to shift, uh, into attainable housing. They, they currently have a proposal for an initiative out that, that is targeting certain, uh, sectors of the working population. So if you are, for example, uh, if you work in, uh, restaurant industry, uh, there, there are some supplements for housing, uh, that, that's coming through the, the Walton Foundation. But where it is really crazy is, uh, they are looking at a program where where they would come to a city and ask the city to issue a bond, go get a loan, and buy all of the lots in a sub-division. The Walton Foundation would guarantee the bond. And so I think, the, the best I understand this, is, uh, the idea would be the city would buy the lots and attach those to a bond, that the, the home buyer would then pay off through their property taxes, so kinda like an improvement district, okay? That bond gets paid by the homeowner. The difference is, and the reason for this, is home prices are getting so high, what they're looking at, and like I said, this isn't, this isn't on the radar, this isn't coming in the next year that I know of, but I found it interesting. The city would buy the lots, a developer would come in and build the houses. Someone would come to buy the house, they would not have to finance the cost of the lot. So they're only gonna get financing for the cost of the home. They're paying the lot cost through their tax bill every year, which would be guaranteed by the Walton Foundation, but it would be in the city's name until it's paid for. Kind of an interesting concept. So what's happening is housing costs have went up really high, the interest rate has went up really high. A lot of people don't qualify for a home loan now, right? Because of what the payment would be to get that financing. West Fork's in a little bit of a position, most of everything, if not everything in West Fork qualifies for rural development, which is a hundred percent financing, zero down. But I just found that that was interesting, that the Walton Foundation was looking at something like that. Particularly, they're looking at rural towns and communities to start implementing that, but there's no, there's no indication they're looking at West Fork, and I don't think there's any indication that it's even set in stone yet. It was just a thought that some of the foundation members are looking at and considering, so...
I don't see how the bank would allow you to build a house on a piece of land that ain't in your name and goes without. So how would the city of West Fork own the property that the house sits on until it's paid for? It'd be two different, you know, the house ain't moved...
Maybe harvest would do that.
Yeah, yeah, the harvest will do that.
So I think, John, I think there's probably a lot of questions that are gonna arise through this. My only thought was, when I heard about it, if Walmart's looking to throw money at it like that, then there's probably, there's probably some loopholes that other people are willing to jump through to make it happen, but it's certainly an interesting concept.
We only get a portion of the taxes to the city and the cities.
We wouldn't get anything from it.
We would not.
We would just be holding the bond. They, yeah, they would be paying, paying that bond off through their property taxes.
So does that mean the portion of property tax that we normally see for that property we would not see?
No, nothing would change, as far as I know, and I don't have any detail on it.
Interesting.
It is, it's an interesting concept that the Waltons would get into, so... With that, throwing that out there, that's all I had.
I'd like to move to my turn. A second.
What are y'all doing?
That was most of the second to his ear. All of us in favor say yes.
Yes.
If it does pose no, that motion carries, we are...